The November 4th, 2024 Auburn City Council Workshop will be called to all. The business tonight is the FY24 Audit Presentation, and we're very excited that our school board will join for the current audit.
Does that lift your mic?
It is, yes.
Yeah, just bring it up.
I have a little PowerPoint presentation which you go through. If you have any questions, please leave it at any point. First graph here shows a summary of the audit results in terms of the opinion on the actual state, which includes the school department's qualified opinion, which means the financial answer in accordance with generally accepted. This is exactly what you want. Wanted opinion, it was a clean opinion. To the financial statement audit, we also performed two compliance. So first of all, we performed an audit in accordance with the compliance. It's what we usually call a compliance. And here we considered the city's internal controls over the financial reporting to ensure that the balances are materially correct. The compliance and grant agreement for separate material weaknesses, big deficiencies, a number of recommendations, and we're going to go through all those once we get to the compliance report. Again, 2025, we expended about 50 of the federal grant. We performed an audit with the uniform guidance. 20 city and school expended about 11. And so this program or private audit, separate programs, coronavirus state and local funds grant, we tested the community development block, we tested the child nutrition cluster, we tested Esser or the elementary and secondary school emergency relief. We tested highway planning and construction cluster. And in terms of difference with the uniform, we had three separate funds, and a few minutes once we get to court on that kind of overview.
You'll have to push it.
And so on this next, the financial results for the year. So the first graph has the municipal side of the government as well as the school department. Three graphs, we have just the school department and the school department. Fund balance in an analysis. In terms of fund balance, we cut it into four different categories. Talk about what's included in it. So first of all, it represents resources which cannot be spent because they're not in a spendable form. Specifically, we're talking long bills and prepaid expenditures. Then we have restricted down prices with constraints placed on their expenses. These are amounts that have strings attached to them. Talking about the school department's general fund. Because the school department receives state education subsidy to support its students, to educate its students, any remaining amounts have to be restricted for that educating students. This represents resources that are constrained by the city's intent to be used for specific purposes. So these are amounts that the council sets aside. Talking about a one set aside to balance the following year budget, so the 2024 budget, set aside for self-insurance, and 946,000 for encumbrances in reserves. And then finally, what remains after amounts are recognized in the other categories. See what's left. In total, between 2022 and 2023, fund balance increased by about $4.5 million. We'll see some of the reasons why that happened on the next few graphs. This next general fund revenues, and it is a budget actual comparison. In total revenues were about $2.9 million over budget, so you received more than what was budgeted for. Some of the larger variances are mentioned here. Tax revenues are over budget by $516,000 due to greater than expected excise taxes and the change in deferred taxes. Intergovernmental revenues are over budget by $1,271,000 primarily due to higher than expected state revenue. Patient subsidy. Interest revenues are over budget by $248,000 due to higher than expected rates of return. And miscellaneous revenues were over budget by about $569,000 due to the receipt of donated donation. So just kind of an overview of things, you know, things that were going on with your general fund revenues. As expenditures were about $5.7 million under budget. Again, some larger variances. General government expenditures were under budget by $1,783,000, and that was primarily due to lower than expected cost-related community development, as well as lower than expected benefit cost increases. Public safety expenditures were over budget by about $153,000 due to overtime as vacancies have been an issue with the police. Services were under budget by $363,000, and that was primarily due to public work staffing shortages. And other appropriations were under budget by about $516,000 primarily due to the receipt of unbudgeted donations and the sale of laptops back to Apple. Any questions on any of those? The next graph shows unassigned fund balance as a budget, one of those metrics or measurements used to do easily healthy. We generally recommend one to two months' worth of expenditures, which equals 8.3% to 16.7%. When we did this calculation for the 30th, 2023, that percentage equaled more than 13%. And so the city's right in that range of what we usually recommend. You're in a that metric. The city does have a fund balance policy, and that's to maintain unrestricted fund balance in a general fund of no less than 10% and no more than 14% of general fund annual. Opposed to comparing to unassigned fund balance, the city's policy is to compare to unrestricted fund balance, which is your total fund balance removing the school department general fund. When we did this calculation, 18.08%, and so you're a little higher than the highest 14%. And the city has language that essentially that amount, 14%, can be used at the discretion of the council. The exact dollar is 130,192. You know, I know last year you guys had some discussions about, you know, we use that taxes, we're going to use that for capital purposes. I don't know if you've had discussions so far, but that's what the amount is. So you have some discretion there if you haven't made choices about how to use that Questions on any of that? This next graph shows unassigned fund balances for the cities for 2023. I think the five largest municipalities with Auburn being number five. You can see communities that are presented here are all right around 30 to pretty, pretty close one another. Auburn's percentage is actually the lowest, but they're all very close. Lewiston had the highest at 17.79%. Again, Auburn at a little bit more than 13%, but all very close to one another. And then on the final three graphs, we're just going to talk about the school department alone for a little bit. First graph shows general fund balance over the last years, similar to what was talking about the citywide. Talk about what's included in here in terms of the different categories. So we had non-spendable fund balance that equaled about $51,000, and that represented a case as of June 30th, 2020. Then the current fund, 2.7 million, and that amounts the budget for 2024 budget. Eighty-nine remain after other categories, and that equals approximately $7,176,000 at year end. In total, fund balance increased by about $2.8 million, so a pretty significant increase And then graph nine shows general fund revenues for just the department. In total, revenues were about $778,000 over it. Again, some of the variances are mentioned here. Revenues were over budget by $280,000 primarily due to higher than expected. And other revenues were over budget by $400,000 primarily due to budgeted donations and the sale of laptops. Finally, we have general, just the school department, about $8.3 million under budget. Expenditures were under primarily due to the higher rates at lower rate and teacher special education instruction expenditures were under budget by $1,511,000 due to unexpected out-of-district place vacancies and transportation budget by about $180,000 primarily due to higher than expected vacancies in the mechanic position. So again, just kind of a high view of what was going on in terms of statements for 2023. If hand it off to Sarah, appliance report.
I want to say about required auditing standards. Auditing standards require that we test and report on internal report. Casey noted a material is an issue that could result in material misstatement. This is the most severe deficiency related to grant account reconciliations. The city uses a number of grants to their grant. These are software, but we're not that grant tools aren't being reconciled to the general on a monthly or yearly basis. So at year end, when we come in, we do a lot of end to make the revenues match the expenses on the reconciliations. Post this year to the school CDBG and home grants, main DOT grants, and the ARPA grant in the future for that to be reconciled by fine grant each year. Another large material related reconciliations are being performed monthly, but their entries are what I would consider differences from month to month. So identified as errors that were still on our reconciliation had not been ended up. Have a bank reconciling, just reconciling the difference between your bank statement balance and your accounting system balance, and it's just a difference with time checks cleared, deposits cleared. So identified never during the year. So at year end, those investigated and then we also there, there was about a half reconciling item that didn't have any support, also including some outstanding checks that were written in fiscal year '24, not in fiscal year '23, so they weren't proper outstanding items. So overall, when you have a reconciliation like that, that's not truly reconciled, then your cash balances are being misreported. So I'm hoping that this year, the finance director will take a look at those reconciliations, identify those areas that still need to be cleared up, and clear those up in a timely manner. It took about a year for that reconciliation to be completely cleared up for the audit. Related to that is the city accounting software to school accounting software reconciliation. The city and school have different accounting softwares. The school activity is uploaded to the city every month through an import. The city is responsible for ensuring that that import includes everything it should include and excludes everything that shouldn't be included, so there's no duplication of activity. It's not as straightforward as it sounds, and there's certainly a lot of journal entries that were happening during the year that were meant to try to get that activity to reconcile. And I'm not sure that it was ever truly being reconciled every month because at year end, there were some significant differences. Some of them related to those journal entries that were on the bank reconciliations, and that reconciliation took about a year to complete after year end as well. So our suggestion is every month should be reconciled. After the import is completed, any questions should be dealt with. There should be lots of communication between the school and the city, and when you get to year end, you shouldn't have a bunch of unreconciled differences that you have to The last material weakness related to the capital asset schedule. Now normally, the finance director prepares this schedule, but as you know, there was some turnover in that position, and I don't think that instructions were clear for the new staff on how to prepare the schedule. So it was about nine months before we received a schedule, and that schedule wasn't complete. We had a lot of back and forth, tried to find where all these capital assets were that should be recorded on the schedule and recorded on the financial statements. In the future, I think that this will be much improved because we've gone through it for the first year, but certainly that was a concern that we may not have found all the capital assets that we needed to find to include on the financial statements. And then finally, we had one significant deficiency. That significant deficiency is less than a material weakness, but it still warrants your attention. That related to preparation of the financial statements. We generally report this as a deficiency when we prepare your financial statements. However, it's important to note that we made 19 entries for the school department and 24 entries for the city, and that's a lot of entries. So we'd like to see the city and the school preparing more of those reconciliations at year end to reduce those entries. Without the entries that we recommended, we believe that city's financials would have been materially misstated. We have a series of other comments or recommendations. We call them management letter comments. I just want to go through them quickly. One is related to documentation of sole source procurement contracts. A city can have a sole source procurement if there isn't an available pool of vendors out there to provide a good or a service. If they choose to use a sole source procurement, it needs to be documented for federal program purposes. The uniform guidance requires that the reason why you had to do a sole procurement versus going out to bid or getting quotes needs to be documented, and we weren't seeing that. So we discussed that with grant personnel, and that should hopefully be addressed going We also had a weakness related to city journal entries. We found in our journal entry testing that a lot of journal entries didn't have a secondary review. There should always be have, there should always be an independent review of a journal entry, and there should always be supporting documentation attached to that journal entry. Related to the city-school reconciliations, there were a lot of journal entries going on, and there wasn't a lot of support for them. So staff were really struggling to figure out whether the journal entries were valid or whether they were errors. So making sure there's adequate support and a secondary review is really important. We tested school payroll, and we tested pay averaged employees. There were four pay averaged employees that we tested, and three had errors. One employee was overpaid, two employees were underpaid. So we're suggesting that the school review their pay averaged employee calculations to ensure they're complete going forward. We also noticed that the Parks and Recreation Fund had postings to their fund balance. Usually, fund balance doesn't have any, nothing is posted to fund balance except for the close of the fiscal year or a prior period adjustment. So our recommendation was just to not post a fund balance during the year. And then finally, we test receipts or deposits of activity funds at the schools. We tested 32 deposits at the Edward Little School, and we found that four of them were not deposited to the bank account timely. And timely is within 10 days per school policy. We had one deposit that took about 20 days to be deposited. So we often have that comment, just hope that the staff will continue to try to be timely in their deposits. That's the end of the governmental accounting standards section of the findings. Does anybody have any questions at this point? Okay, we'll go on to the uniform guidance report. As Casey mentioned, we audited six programs. Three of those programs were qualified opinions because we had findings. The first report, as far, the first finding was related to the ARPA grant, and it was over reporting. We found that expenditures on the quarterly ARPA reports to the Treasury were overstated. In one case, it was because an accrual had been counted in a prior period, and then the subsequent payment of that accrual was also counted again, so it was duplicated. We also found situations where purchase orders were being recorded as expenditures. Purchase order is a, an order for a good or service, but it doesn't represent that the service has actually been incurred, and so those expenditures were realized too soon. We also had a finding on the child nutrition cluster over activities allowed and allowable costs. We were testing breakfast counts, and we found that in one month, 1,000 breakfast counts were requested in error. That represented 7% of the month's request, and so the school received 1,000 more in reimbursement from the state, 1,000 more counts of reimbursement from the state. We also found that staff that were being charged, the fresh fruit and vegetable program, were being charged based on a budgeted percent, and the uniform guidance requires actual time and act, time and effort records or payroll costs, meaning a timesheet support showing that staff worked a certain number of hours on that grant. We believe that the error in accounts was just a clerical error, and it could have been alleviated if somebody had actually just reviewed the submission to the state. So we're suggesting that the business manager receive those monthly requests along with the supporting documentation so they can double check what's being submitted to the state and catch any errors ahead of time. And then finally, the CDBG grant had a finding related to program income. CDBG funds have a revolving loan fund, which means you give out loans to individuals and they pay you back. When principal and interest payments are received, that's considered program income to the grant. Before you draw down any new grant funds, you have to use up all your program income. And in the first quarter of fiscal year '23, you had available program income, but you drew 22 grant in costs and new grant funds, so that's considered an unallowable cost for grant purposes. Does anybody have any questions about those findings? Okay, thank you.
I think, I think that's all we had. We'd be happy to answer any general questions related to the audit, the audit process.
Counsel Platts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Casey and Sarah, for that presentation. This is the second time I've gotten to see it. I saw it last week as well. I had a question. I mean, the way I look at this audit or any audit, first of all, probably no such thing as a perfect audit, and I think, you know, part of this process is to learn from our mistakes and make sure that there's progress moving forward. The question I had was with regard to the process of RKO, and is there any expectation of like year-to-year monitoring? For example, you gave us this list of deficiencies. This is my first year on the school committee or the council. For all, for all I know, it was the same presentation last year with the same deficiencies. Is, is that monitoring of, of change and progress, is that on us as a body, or do you guys provide any sort of summary data from years past to say, hey, guys, it's the fifth year that we've seen this, it's time to button it up?
It's, it's all of us, honestly. You know, it's, it's management ensuring that those comments don't come back up again, those findings, those significant deficiencies, those material weaknesses. And then obviously, as part of the audit process, we, we check on it again. I mean, it's, it's one of the first steps that we do next year to make sure that it's not a reoccurring issue. You know, for all of those programs that had findings, they are now considered high risk, so we will audit every one of them next year, assuming it's a large dollar amount is expended on it. But yeah, no, essentially, it's, it's management, and it's also us. I mean, we circle back to all of those.
Other questions or comments?
So to follow up on Counselor Platts's point, this is probably a question for the manager and the superintendent is what, what action plan has been put in place to remediate the findings pointed out during the audit?
I can start with the city side anyway, so I think that, and Casey, Sarah, thank you very much. I think they have done an outstanding job working with our staff through this process. And I think to Counselor Platts's question regarding year-to-year, it's also important to remember we're in November now, this year started in, our fiscal year actually started in July. We'll be looking at the FY '24 actual audit, and this was all during the transition of changeover of staff between school and the finance department. And so we are catching up to that transition and the changes that took place. I think we have a good system in place. The reconciliation is not just happening now, but they've also gone back and started working towards through that monthly reconciliation. That will continue, and I mean regularly with the superintendent, we actually, we talk about the audit, we talk about some of these financial concerns and making sure that our staff are communicating. I think that we are looking forward to the school department being on Munis fully for the next fiscal year, and we know that that will bring a lot of benefits to the tying out that Sarah really mentioned in her presentation. So, so yes, I think we have a good plan in place. We're working through some of these deficiencies. The finance director just forwarded me a draft of internal policies, especially as it pertains to what's needed for sole source, where are we at with bids. We'll actually bring some recommendations back to the council regarding some of those amounts. Those amounts have not been touched for decades probably, and we do need to make some adjustments. And so we'll be bringing that to the council for consideration soon, but there's also recommendations that Kelsey had put forward in some of the internal policies that are specifically addressing the things that Sarah and Casey brought up just now. So I don't know, Amanda or Sue, if you have anything to add.
I think you covered that very well. Do you have anything that you want to add? I know the transition of Munis will really be helpful for us.
I agree, Mr. Crowell. You took the words out of my mouth. Us going into Munis is going to be huge as far as our reporting and for the audit. It will save a lot of time, I think, and it will make things much more clear.
So to follow up on that, would it be possible to have a high-level bulleted plan and a report at the end of Q2, Q3, and Q4 about the progress that's being made to remediate the issue so that the council? so that the council and the school committee, um, understand how we're progressing on this as we go towards the next fiscal year?
Yes, absolutely.
Uh, other questions or comments from the council on the audit? We're not seeing any, thank you very much. We appreciate your work. I know that, uh, it culminates here in about a half an hour, but there's hours and hours and hours. I see you guys in the back room working on this stuff. So we really appreciate all the effort. Uh, as the manager said, it's really important to, um, look at the process and procedures we're using, make sure that if we see any deficiencies, we're taking action to clean those up. And, uh, hopefully, we'll get these remediated and, um, it won't be a problem going forward. So thank you again for all your work. So, um, certainly the, uh, school board can, uh, leave. If you don't want to sit and watch the rest of the work session here tonight, you're welcome to stay if you like. Uh, we'll move on. The next item, uh, is a workshop item for a proposed tax and, uh, map amendment related to Lake Auburn watershed overlay district. This is the second piece, uh, the planning board and the council previously dealt with the septic piece of the overlay district. And, um, what's coming forward now is the agricultural and forestry piece. Uh, as a reminder, um, the septic group was a little ahead, and then we, um, had some state statutory, uh, timing compliance, uh, that we had to wait for relative to forestry. So this piece is just now, uh, appearing before you. Uh, Mr. Cousins and Mr. Blais.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. The, uh, I just want to say that, uh, this is work result of a working group, uh, partially by SNRB, the Ag Working Group, LawPAC. Well over ten meetings, um, it was a lot of effort put into this. And, uh, you know, I think this is just a result of what I think is going to be good text going forward. Uh, you know, really good, um, ordinance work from a large section of the public. Why more changes? Um, you know, essentially, we've got the directive, uh, from, from the council here. Um, and again, I just relayed the group, uh, doing a lot of, of work from getting input from the public. Um, really, it's about public water supply, you know, protection of public water supply, and then also good land use and allowing people to still use the land as it was intended. Um, what we did was we included definitions for agriculture, forestry uses. These were text changes and additions. We added text additions under fertilizer and pesticides. This is all under the, um, Lake Auburn watershed, all these items. Erosion control, tree clearing and forestry. Uh, the mayor, uh, kindly, uh, added that we did get the Maine State Forest Service. They did review this. Um, we're, you know, presenting some information or some text that's a little bit more restrictive than state requirements. And then, you know, it all, all this stuff goes back to, you know, staff, really, um, being able to implement these, um, language changes and, and ultimately helping the public. And we came up with a great map, a two-hundred-and-fifty-foot, uh, setback, um, map for, to the lake pond stream, brooks and wetlands. Next slide. Again, I, I just went over a lot of these, why more changes? But I, I'm, I'm just going to quickly go down through and, and go specifically just an overview of everything, but I'm going down to the third bullet. Definitions, agu- agricultural uses, animal uses, clear cutting, invasive species, livestock, NRCS, what do all these mean? NWI, NRCS is Natural Resources Conservation Service. NWI is National Wetlands Inventory. Um, fertilizer, pests, pesticides. Again, we're defining all this, so it's easier for staff to define and to assist people that want to do, uh, farming essentially in the watershed. Um, soil test, uh, summer dormancy, tillage, total land, which is, and being nitrogen. So, um, nitrogen is really what we want to keep out of the lake if we think about non-point source pollution. Nitrogen and phosphorus is what we're trying to keep out. So all of this stuff is, would be, as we apply it in text and ordinance, it's really about what's best management practices were. You know, this is our thought process as a group when we work through this. What are the best management practices to protect the lake, but at the same time have farming? Next, we, um, define the safe boards for water quality protections, uh, waste and nutrient management plans with required buffers. Requires existing farms to comply with waste and nutrient management plans. We want folks that do have a farm in the watershed to get within NRCS, identify what the potential, um, impacts could be in terms of non-point source pollution to the lake. Um, we set limits on the number of animal and poultry, animal units. Uh, we increased the tillage setbacks from one-hundred to two-hundred-and-fifty feet. Uh, again, a map, we developed a map on that. Uh, manure spreading prohibited, and then language for manure storage BMPs. We'll have a individual slide for all this and talk through it a little bit more specifically. But, uh, we're looking at, you know, covering manure anywhere in the watershed, um, having an impervious surface that it sits on. So we'll, we'll talk a little bit about those. Um, we developed some guidelines for fertilizer and pesticides. Um, looked at a lot of different communities, what they, what they have done. We adopted a lot of that language and then crafted it specifically for, for our watershed. Clear cutting, um, limited to two acres on a twenty-acre track. And then, or clear cleaning is limited to twenty-five percent of a lot on a twenty acres or less. Um, we added some state forestry BMP language for tree clearing and state requirements for harvesting in the shoreline zone. So we, essentially, what that means is that we updated it to today's standards. Uh, the old language was referencing probably something from the mid, mid nineteen eighties to early nineties. The language has gotten more restrictive, we're just getting up to date with that. So that's what that was. And then again, uh, the Rule Twenty, uh, that's by the Maine State Forest Service. Next slide. Um, again, these are, I'm not going to go down through every one of the definitions. I really touched on all these already. Agricultural uses, animal units, clear cutting, invasive species, livestock, NRCS, NWI, fertilizer, pesticides, poultry, uh, poultry, soil test, um, summer dormancy. You know, really, these are all, you know, um, terminology, definitions that we would use in agricultural world. Um, they're all identified in here, and it's identified in the text and red. In your packets, there's the, the actual edits. And then this is, uh, kind of a summary of, of what we've done. Next slide. Uh, farming in the Lake Auburn watershed, uh, allows farming in the watershed with defined safe boards for water quality protection, waste and nutrient management plans, uh, by the Natural Resources Conservation Service. And then we've added required buffers to hu- to two-hundred-and-fifty feet. Um, we require existing flo- uh, farms to comply with obtaining waste and nutrient management plans that raise livestock or poultry by June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-seven, regardless of size and crop and farms over one-thousand, crop farms over one-thousand square feet. So again, we're trying to allow people to, uh, use their land in the watershed, but have some safe boards comply with, you know, having great drinking water. We, uh, we removed all hobby farms. There is no definition of hobby farms anymore. I think it's, it's really, as long as you comply with these items, um, you can have a, um, a farm in the watershed. Approvals are required by LawPAC, um, Lake Auburn Watershed Protection Commission, city staff, and with NRCS input. I think that's important as well. Um, our committee did, was made up of, uh, the folks at LawPAC and city staff and the, the public that was appointed to those committees. Next slide. We set the limits on animal units in the watershed. And really, we, we just define what they are, um, what does one acre of land, um, what, what does it allow? And it just gives, again, a good definition of, um, you know, what, what we can and cannot have. So, you know, we set a limit of a hundred-and-fifty animal units per lot. Doesn't matter the size. So we're, again, putting safe boards on that and making sure that, uh, you know, we've got clear direction for, you know, future, um, future farms in the watershed. The buffers, this is, uh, what you see up here is just a buffers map. Um, you know, it's basically for tillage and setbacks, uh, for farming, two-hundred-and-fifty feet from all natural resources. Um, this includes any of the tributaries that are in the, in the watershed, any of the wetlands that come up under the National Wetlands Inventory mapping, and then, uh, um, and then the lake itself. So it's a little bit more inclusive than other maps. But again, it's, it's something that staff can go back to. Um, you know, someday, if Eric and I are not here, you know, somebody else could take this map and utilize it. And I think it's a great resource for years to come for the community. Um, next is, uh, manure storage requirements. If we, if we talk about impacts to the watershed, and, uh, you know, if we could look at one item that, that could be a, um, something that could be impactful in terms of negative impactful in terms of total nitrogen and phosphorus inputs to the lake. If you had a, you know, manure storage area that, um, was really leachating into, in a, into a stream that, and that stream was eventually tied into our, our lake, I think that over time, the bioaccumulation of phosphorus and nitrogen could be a real issue. And, uh, these are just some examples of, um, what NRCS is doing. When they go through and get a nutrient management plan, these are some examples of, uh, you know, what they could do. Putting concrete impervious surface on the bottom, um, so it can't leachate into the ground, and then having, obviously, a cover from the rain, um, and the weather elements. Um, these are, th- this is a great example of what is best management practices for, um, you know, water quality protection and watershed protection, um, for the public. The, um, we went on and further, we, uh, we created guidelines for fertilizers and pesticides. This is for, um, really, the, the cumulative use of all the residents in the watershed. I think that, um, this is a good piece that it really makes people aware and to think about what are they putting on their lawns? What are they applying on their trees? What are the pesticides? You know, what, what are the impacts, uh, to essentially the, um, you know, the public water supply? Um, I think it's a really good, this one might be a little bit challenging from an enforcement standpoint, but I think it's really, really important for public education. And there's no better way to highlight that in an ordinance and to really give us guidelines if we're going to, you know, go out there and really talk about impacts to our watershed, impacts to the public water supply. I think this really, it really hits a, a note. Uh, and a lot of, a lot of communities, they use this, the fertilizer and pesticide guidelines. And I think it's a, a great place for this to rest is in, in the ordinance itself. And then lastly, um, we put some safe boards on clear cutting in the watershed, um, limiting to two acres on a twenty-acre track. Clear cutting is limited to twenty-five percent or two acres, depending on the size, whichever is less. And then we added some state forestry BMP language for tree clearing. And we really just adopted the Maine State Forest Service's language. We had a licensed forester, um, on, on our, in our group that provided a, a lot of great, uh, feedback on this and really guided the group on the language of this, this section right here. And then we also added the Rule Twenty of the adoption from the Maine State Forest Service. Again, um, people might read the, uh, look at the, few, the look ahead for the schedule. And what's driving the schedule, and I just wanted, it, this isn't any slide or anything, but it's a forty-five day notice that's a requirement from the state, from the Maine State Forest Service. And that's what's driving the first reading on the eighteenth and then the last reading on, on December second. So that's, it's the forty-five days from that first public hearing that we had with Planning Board. So, um, that's, that's the reason those dates are laid out that way. I'm happy to answer any questions from the, from the council.
Questions or comments from the council? Counsel Platts.
Thank you. Thank you for that presentation. I had a, just a quick question. Um, as we created these recommendations, were there any other communities or bodies of water that we looked at? I'm sure there were many different examples of things taken from other communities, but specifically, were there any other communities in Maine that we looked at to mimic the type of regulations that they might have around their bodies of water?
So, um, yeah, so part of, um, I guess my, part of my career is, um, you know, China Lake, um, is a, the, uh, public water supply for, um, Waterville, Ken, you know, Winslow, North Vassaburo, and those other communities. Certainly, my experience, when I worked with them to help them with their, I was on, I was one of the public at that point. Um, but we helped write a lot of those ordinances. And that's what drove a lot of our initial conversations and information that we use, uh, particularly with septic systems. But we certainly looked at Kennebec, uh, you know, Water District and their water supply and what they had done. Um, you know, for pesticides, um, and fertilizer, a lot of the communities in southern Maine, um, had adopted the same language. Um, Saco, Scarborough, there was a, a couple others off the top of my head that, um, I can't come up with, but we certainly looked at other, other communities, uh, for, you know, that, that had similar types of ordinances.
To follow up on that, um, LawPAC's consultant, and their name escapes me at the moment, had done a lot of work around Quavon Reservoir. And so a lot of our initial discussions, they provided us feedback about some of the remediation efforts that they had there as well.
Yep, that certainly eluded me, but we certainly looked at Quavon Reservoir in Massachusetts, you know, being a real large public, public water supply.
And I would just add that this is a piece of the work that's been done for the Lake Auburn watershed. We've already done the phosphorus standards. We've already done standards around housing development. There are definitely elements that came from other communities, but I think if you look at the whole package, you'll be very hard pressed to find a set of standards that is this comprehensive and this, um, stringent, really. And it's, it's being used as an example for some other communities around the state as well as possibly around the shoreline zone statewide, um, some of the elements.
Yeah, that, that being said, what Eric already said, so the, the first draft that was approved, uh, around septic systems mostly, um, was approved in July. That hasn't been codified yet. But the language that you all have, have all those adoptions because the council has already approved it. Has that included in the packet with the, they're not redlined? Those are now adopted, so it's, it's all in there. And then the new text that we're adopting is in there. All is one, one nice package for, for everybody to review.
Counsel Conlon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate the, uh, presentation, but as importantly, I want to thank you and, and all involved with this great effort, a lot of really thorough, uh, thought and work clearly put into it. So, uh, looking through all the details, I'm glad you guys were working on it and, uh, and did a great job. Question I had was, um, i- i- and I guess it's in terms of some of these, uh, changes. So, uh, for example, I'm looking at the manure storage requirements. If, if these are a current farm and they aren't necessarily meeting these standards, is, what are, what are the thoughts, or have there yet been thoughts? Or is that the next step in terms of? Or is that the next step in terms of, say, uh, support to help them bring things up to code? Uh, in what timeframe?
Yeah, so there is, there is some specific language and it's, um, there will be updates. Each, each existing farm in the watershed will have to have an updated, you know, nutrient management plan that's approved by, is a date, probably July of 2027, off the top of my head. But that's, you know, I think that's a, that's kind of a triangle that's working with NRCS, the city and the landowner. And I think as long as every, if the public's moving for, you know, the individual's moving forward, you know, we set up a timeline, but I think that there's gonna be a little bit of flexibility there in terms of actual getting NRCS onboard and getting a federal, federal agency to, to help. There could be a timeline that we can't control at that point, but we're, we'd certainly identify a farm by that time and get the ball rolling and, and, uh, you know, hopefully find a path to success. Once they get a nutrient management plan, they're really eligible to, to get 100% funding for some of the manure storage pits that we showed you. So, they could actually, um, get funding for that, that's, that's supported through their nutrient management plan. The first step is getting a nutrient management plan completed. And then obviously the second steps, which could be a year or so down the line, is implementing the best management practice.
Thank you, very helpful.
Counsel, Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too thank you for bringing this forward and explaining it as thorough and as comprehensive as you have. With that being said, are we being as comprehensive with what we can do in the watershed in regards to how many homes can be built or what can be built? As well as what businesses can go in? And then the unintended consequences from whatever road, roads that need to be built as well as whatever city services, whether it's plowing or, or salting or sanding?
So, I, I'll, I'll make a comment on this and then folks from planning can jump in. So, um, I don't think that this in and of itself, uh, has any effect on the number of homes you can build or, um, uh, you know, plowing roads or those types of things. I think earlier on, the council adopted changes to the zoning, uh, that governed, um, the rate of growth that could occur in the overlay district. I, I think that, um, certainly the septic, uh, rules had a lot to do with that. But I don't think that these directly affect, uh, rate of growth. They are more focused on land use, um, outside of housing for agricultural and forestry practices to try to balance out protecting the, uh, the Lake Auburn water quality. And still allow, as, as Mr. Blazer said, it still allow people to engage in these activities on, on their lands. You may want to add, add anything to that?
That's a great explanation. I think we've already adopted those standards and the limits on housing. Lake Auburn Watershed Protec-, Protection Commission also recently adopted a new watershed-based management plan, um, that identified a lot of things that can be done throughout the watershed, whether their housing, agriculture, natural stream erosion, any of those things. And city staff, along with LawPAC and Water District staff, have been engaged with Maine DOT, uh, with their Environmental Services Director. And she has put forward a plan to look at all road, uh, DOT assets within the watershed as part of a study to see how those, those publicly owned assets can be, um, improved over time to minimize impacts on water quality. We don't know for sure that that'll be in the DOT work plan, but it's proposed right now.
Counsel, Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With that said, DOT roads, but what about when they, the developer develops and puts homes in and they all have to have roads? Supposedly, if they're built up to code, then the city has to take on the responsibility of maintaining them and things and providing city services, which could potentially be unintended consequences by whatever. I mean, I know the stormwater separation and different things, but there's always unintended consequences about the surface water runoff.
Yeah, I think that, um, the, a lot of what the agricultural uses and the best management practices addresses, a lot of the language that we have in here addresses, addresses the runoff. Particularly for agricultural uses. So, I think that, um, in terms of what we could do and what we can do, I think this is probably some of the, I would be confident to say that this is some of the most restrictive language in the state in terms of protecting a, a public water supply, but still allowing these activities to happen. The agricultural zone, um, is, is not impacted, will not be impacted. There's still very strong language in the ordinance that does not allow any new homes. So, there won't be any additional road building or anything like that. There may be some additional road building to get to fields or something like that. But again, that's required nutrient management plan that, that has to be approved by the city, NRCS. And we im-, we impose best management practices through buffers and, and level of spreaders and different engineering techniques that protect the resource. And I think that that's, I think that's the biggest takeaway here is that we're really getting some, some good, clear language that allows best management practices through agricultural uses to be implemented.
And that, that's not changing with this draft. This is what's adopted. The, uh, the housing piece is not changing with this draft. That was adopted back in July and we do have a maximum number of dwelling units. We'll be reporting back to you about how that's happening. We think that the buffer maps, um, the large lot size requirements, phosphorus standards, all of those make it really unattractive to create any new roads in the watershed for development. There is a possibility of new homes along existing roads, but we think it's very unlikely to see any new roads. Based on the standards that you've already adopted.
And Mr. Cousins, remind me, my recollection is when the council dealt with the septic and the phosphorus piece, um, there was a limit on the number of permits per year over the five-year period. So, there could be analysis to see if there was going to be impact on the water quality in the lake. Is that my recollection correct?
Maximum of three per year and we'll be reporting back to you. So, if there was, if we started to see pressure for more than that, we would be denying anything more than three per year. But you would, we would be able to report back to you about the pressures that are being faced by that.
Thank you.
And it is exempt from LD 2003 in the watershed. So, there's no allowance for more than, uh, two-unit buildings in the watershed, in the residential zone.
Counsel, Iver.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the report. My question is seeing, uh, what's going on with these, uh, ordinances that are gonna affect farmers? And thank you, Counsel, Colin, about your comments. I, I agree with that is, have you gone, my question is, have you gone and talked to some of these farms that are within the watershed that will possibly be affected by this? And what these are gonna have an impact on them? Cause that's a, that's a big concern I have. Farmers are struggling right now, um, some of them. So, will these impacts do, obviously in the interest of trying to protect, which I think everybody's looking out for, uh, keeping our water quality good? But will it have an impact, uh, greater impact that will lo-, ha-, lose farms as well?
We haven't, we haven't directly reached out to any of the farms in the watershed as of yet. But once, I guess, once the ordinance is passed, I think that's, could, would be the responsibility of planning and permitting to do that through code. I think we would work together and identify those, those farms. I don't, I don't think there's many. But I think that it's, it's a, I would say, you know, from a gut feeling, it's a reasonable lift knowing what's out in the watershed. That this shouldn't be an impact. And if they're, if they're an active farm currently in the watershed, they probably already have a relationship with NRCS. A lot of this is, um, you know, language that just strengthens, um, you know, for future development in the watershed.
Thank you. I have, I have a couple more questions.
Yeah, just, just to follow up on that. One of the members of the committee, uh, is engaged in farming and was the person that, within the last couple of years, did the farm inventory, if I recall correctly, in Auburn. So, I think that, uh, there was probably, um, a pretty good understanding among the subcommittee about what type of agricultural activity is going on in the overlay district and how these regulations might affect them from people who understand and are engaging in farming now.
And I would just add that we've talked to, uh, one dairy farmer in particular that cut some hay in the watershed. We've talked to the largest horse farm in the watershed. And the series of public meetings that we had at the senior center, we did engage with some of the smaller farmers or people that are engaged in farming that we didn't even know were engaged in farming. But there, there has been discussions through those public meetings as well as with a couple of the larger individual farmers.
And Eric, they're receiving public notification of the hearings?
They, they have, yep. They will receive a mailed notice of the public hearing. And I think they've already received it and that included tonight's date, so.
Oh, great, thank you. Yeah, cause that was a, one of my additional comments would be, but it, cause my, my thought is the person that's on the board adding to this, are they in the, you know, the farmer that's adding? It's great there's a farmer involved, but is, are there, is their farm directly in the watershed and potentially will be, um, uh, subject to these ordinances that's gonna happen is one of my questions. But I'm gr-, I'm glad to hear that, the, the notice and there has been some conversation within, with the farmers and they have been included. And they have different various activities within it, so that's great. My other, uh, question within this is, I, I see that it removes hobby farms, but I just want to make sure I, I was clear in what I heard that. Just because it removes hobby farms with this, that they will still, somebody, if they wanted to create a hobby farm, they will still be allowed to as long as they're conforming with these regulations. And they'll be able to do that. Cause I, I'd hate to see you remove hobby farms and then there's, they can't, nobody can do that. I would hate to see that.
Nope, that, that's correct, Counselor.
Awesome.
Yep, my, my understanding of that, to follow up on that point was originally in the discussion, only hobby farms are going to be allowed and non-hobby farms are going to be excluded. And I think that committee's discussion was that whether it's a hobby farm or not, long as you're conforming to the regulations, whether you engage in commercial activity or whether you're a hobby farm, if you can, if you comply with the standards, that would be okay.
Great, uh, one, one last question. In re-, in respects to, um, 60 dash two, when it talks about, um, the area, the minimum acre of land requirement, one cattle per acre, 1.5, uh, animal units, uh, for pasture, for horses. Where did that, uh, number come from? To, to, to say you can only have one cow per acre?
So, this was originally, this is just the definition of 6.2? This, this is our exact, it's in the ordinance currently. This isn't adopted. This is just, uh, highlighting the language as we use as a reference. So, we, we use 6 dash two in the, in, uh, C above, um, in the redline piece. And I just wanted to highlight what 6 point, 6 dash two is. And that's already in the ordinance. So, I just wanted it available if, if the question came up, what does, um, 60 dash two mean? And, and, uh, that, that's, that's the definition.
That's, that's been in there for at least 20 years.
And that applies to the ag zone every place in the city. It's not a specific standard just for the ag zone that's in the watershed overlay district, correct?
That is correct.
Yeah, the only, the only exception is that not to exceed of a total of 150 animal units is a cap in the watershed. If you had a really large lot, you would otherwise get over that.
Very, oh, thank you, thank you very much for that. Cause I just wanted to know where did, where did this come from and how was it? And thank you for the clarification that's been in there for 20 years. Cause I just wanted to, if you had a couple, an acre, an acre, why, why not just two? I'm not saying go five, but why can't, where does it originate from to so? Why can't I have two, two cows on an acre? Thank you, thank you for that.
Other questions or comments from the council? Counsel, Whiting.
Thank you. I think this was, um, very thorough and well done. Thank you for that. Just a comment on the fertilizer and pesticide use. It'd be great, and I, not that you'd need more things to do, but to develop some sort of tutorial for people. I'm, I was thinking, wow, gee, it would be great to have a workshop or, you know, some sort of, you know, meeting of, of residents. But it would take a really huge place because there's a lot of residents in this area. So, uh, it might be helpful just to, to just sort of condense and dumb down the, the information about pesticide use and fertilizer use in the watershed for homeowners. Gonna get it because this is the subject of this. But the homeowners, you know, really have the vast majority of land, uh, in the watershed. So, I think that would be helpful in the future. Not right away, but at some point.
Thank you, Counselor Whiting. You know, the LawPAC is about ready to roll out with its septic inspection program and this might be a good time to, you know, add one or two bullets in that, during that, uh, you know, communication around that. That's certainly something that, I think we're gonna get an edited version here in the next week or so. That might be a good place to insert an idea like that, so, thank you.
Other questions or comments from the council?
Just to say, I think that's a great idea, John.
Great, thank you very much. I appreciate the presentation and, uh, we'll move on to the next item. It's a ordinance amendment, uh, workshop item from an ordinance amendment related to manufactured housing trailers, office trailers to allow shipping containers, Conex boxes, railroad cars and other tractor trailer bodies for storage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This has been a discussion we've been having with Planning Board around the, uh, sort of proliferation of Conex boxes and shipping containers being used throughout the city for various uses. It seems that they were much less available, uh, a number of years ago. And they're very easily available to people. And I'm not sure if it's the, the cost of building as compared to a shipping container that's ma-, container that's making them so attractive. But these are becoming very common throughout the city and in other communities as well. So, we started having this discussion with the Planning Board because right now, um, we see, uh, a lot of them, uh, that are not permitted within the city. And as we try to chase those around and ask people to remove them or make them part of a building, which is a possibility under a building code, we get inundated with, um, concerns that they exist in so many other places. Why aren't you making this one go away? Why are you making mine go away? So, we really, um, it seemed unattainable really to, uh, without putting a significant amount of resources towards it, to really go around the city and make these go away at this point because they're so prolific. We started working with the Planning Board to see if there was a way to allow for some use of them, uh, but to make them more acceptable than just being randomly placed on a lot without any standards. We certainly could go back and take the position that, nope, we don't want to do that. We want to dedicate the, the resources to enforcement, uh, to make sure they go the way, go away. But we've worked with the Planning Board to try to shell out some standards that, um, could push them to be screened, um, in especially, uh, residential settings so that they would be behind another structure or not visible from the public way or a neighboring property. Or that they could be modified to look more like a shed or, or a structure that you'd expect in a residential neighborhood. Um, and then to talk a little bit about, uh, their use in agricultural and industrial, um, settings or uses. We had feedback and found that they are, uh, we may not see them at every farm or a large lot, but they're being used pretty widely and not necessarily visible from the street. I have talked with a couple of you about the draft. I know there's some room for being more specific around definitions. But, um, we're happy to work on that, um, after the workshop. But we also want to know if we're headed in generally the right direction? Or does the council prefer that we just do not allow these in residential or commercial settings? Or do you think that maybe requiring them to be screened could allow some flexibility? I know the city has found themselves in the situation where we've needed to use them temporarily. A lot of businesses have as well. And we're really starting to see them incorporated into buildings in industrial- incorporated into buildings in industrial, commercial settings, and also seeing them in other places being used as the sort of building blocks for converting them into housing, so, we're here to have that discussion at a workshop level, take your feedback, and we'll go from there.
Questions or comments by the council? Councilor Whiting?
Yes, in respects to Conex boxes used within, like industrial use within buildings, I think our tour at PacGen, I believe that's correct, had Conex boxes that were integrated within their facility, and that was a really nice and, I think, tie-in that they had done, and it was a really good show of that, so I think that was a very positive example that I saw with that facility.
Other questions or comments from the council, Councilor Gary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'm pleased that you guys have brought it forward, I think a little bit more work, I mean, what you've done is a great start, but I'd like to see the Planning Board do a little bit more, because there's nothing that says like, if I've got a small Conex box or something, that I can't put it in my yard and turn it into a house, there's no criteria for that as far as I can see.
So we can do that now under the building code if it is truly converted into a structure, so that it meets all the building standards, has a proper foundation, siding, roofing, windows, all of those things, we can do that now if they're incorporated into a building with a design professional, we're talking more about when they're just placed on a lot for storage, that they stay in their original shape, condition, they look like a Conex box, they still could be picked up and moved as a Conex box, but we, to answer your question, we can use them to be incorporated or become a structure with additional compliance with the building code.
Other questions or comments, Council Walker?
Sorry? Thank you, I agree with having the boxes where they're needed, but I do agree with you that there needs to be something to try to hide them a little bit, or put them in the backside if that's possible, having them right out in front of the house next to the road doesn't always look that great, but there are a lot of places that need to have something for the extra storage, so I'd hate to see them taken away or make them, take them away, especially if they've got some land around the backside or maybe right to the side of their building to put it on, so I'm hoping we can work something out with most of the people, and I think in the future, they'll become more useful for us in the communities because of what you see being done with these boxes in other communities.
Council Pla.
Thank you, my question was if this all passes down the line, would a shipping container or a Conex box be any different than, say, a shed if I wanted one in my back, other than the fact that I need to keep it out of view and not store hazardous material, would I need a permit, are there size restrictions, et cetera, et cetera?
Yes, there are size restrictions, you would need a permit, I think the biggest difference between this and a shed is it couldn't be placed in your front yard or visible from neighboring properties, unless it's modified to be more like a traditional shed that meets the state of Maine building code, but it would be similar to a shed, and if you weren't going to modify it, it would have to meet the additional screening requirements that a shed may not have to.
Council Whiting?
Thank you, within this, I don't see it, if somebody has a Conex box for such a storage, as Counselor Walker has said, is there any time restriction that this would come in before somebody would have to move it, because I know in my profession with insurance, when somebody has a burned out building and they need to put their possessions into something, a lot of times it's worked out with the insurance companies that we agree to put a Conex box out front to store their belongings until the insurance process is done, sometimes that insurance process can take two years, and you need to keep the evidence on site, so with that example, how would that affect with this ordinance, and would that pose a potential issue?
Yeah, so that would be allowed if they met the screening requirements, I think that is something that came up again in a discussion today, should there be a temporary use allowance that doesn't have to meet those screening requirements, if that's something the council wanted to see in the ordinance, we could work on drafting that in, but I would, that's a good example where during a construction project or renovation, maybe there could be a defined temporary use that doesn't have to meet those same standards, but it should be clear to people when that starts and when that stops, building permits and office trailers for construction projects can be used while there's a valid permit in place for the project, so if somebody pulled a building permit, they could use a storage office trailer on the site for, I think you have six months to start, a year to finish, but it would give you about a year basically with a temporary office trailer for a construction project, we could do something similar with these types of boxes.
Yeah, could that be looked into, because I, some losses that I've done that have been in Auburn, we have used Conex boxes for a number of those to store their personal, people's personal items, thank you.
Council Gary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, this is a hypothetical question that may be reality, in regards to our homeless shelter or warming center or dealing with the homeless, a lot of them need storage for their cart or whatnot, I mean, that prohibits them from getting like, from point A to point B because they don't want to leave their possessions behind, and where, like in the warming center over on Mill Street, hypothetically could be permitted, but it may not be, so if we got these Conex boxes, fixed, retrofitted them so that we could use them as storage unit for those clients that come in for services, and then we decide that we're done using them because we're moving the center, the warming center to another place, or we decided that people wants, those that use them, it might be a better location, then we may need to pick them up and move them, can that be done?
It may be possible to create a screened area where those could be used for that purpose under this ordinance, the, you could probably do that now under the ordinance for a commercial structure like that, but you certainly could under the modified ordinance if it was properly screened.
Counselor Gary, if I could just add a little to that, I think you bring up a great point, is that people get creative with these, and then from the city's, you know, from our code perspective and from the folks trying to enforce our ordinance, people are always trying to push that limit on what they can and can't do, and I think that this, the language that we're proposing gives some safer, you know, guidelines to that, but at the same time, you know, there could be, it could be open to more definition as we open up the definition for insurances or something like that, or additional uses, I think as long as it's defined, they seem to be more prolific throughout the city than ever, and it's the creative thought that you just had, that the individual landowner has, and that kind of interferes sometimes with code and, which can be challenging, so.
Council Cal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, along those lines, as I was reading this, and then reflecting on the, how much more frequent they're being used, which, so two questions, one is, when you mentioned that, that they're being used more and more, that is on residences as well as industrial and commercial, correct?
Absolutely.
I, at least for the future, these are two great examples that we just heard here tonight, I just, you know, I loved all of the work that was put into the ordinance we just talked about, I just, I wonder, and I, so I ask you all as the professionals, is there enough specificity here, specifically, I'm wondering, would it be helpful for staff and for future working with, should there be more specificity to differentiate what is best for residential areas or zones versus industrial and commercial, as you already have allocated or identified for agricultural zones in terms of railroad cars, so that would be my one suggestion in addition to these two great examples, would that be helpful in terms of, as you're working forward with the creative ways people might use these?
Yeah, I think it certainly would be, we're kind of looking for some guardrails, I guess, are we going too permissive, are we not going permissive enough, but it does sound like there could be some room for adjustment on the residential side that we haven't incorporated in.
And to follow up, to give you, I think I would like to see options where we're perhaps a little bit more restrictive in residential areas, or thought through that just to make sure that in the various scenarios, the various different makeups of our wards, and how dense or less dense they are, if that potentially makes sense, or at least get the feedback from the public on that.
I'll make a few comments here to wrap this up, because we're going to be up against a council meeting here shortly, so I have lots of questions about this, I'm going to defer some of these just to conversations later with the staff, but the current ordinance, it's 60-666 in section 12, and then the new section 14 and 15, have very inconsistent definitions, there's no clear definition of what these, we keep talking about Conex boxes, but that's not what this is limited to, so I think there needs to be more thought given to the differentiation between residential and the commercial industrial agriculture, with better definitions of what these type of structures are, and for what use they can be made, the, I think there needs to be some consideration given about when these become accessory structures or when they become buildings, under what conditions, and what the requirements will be for the permit, I think we need to think about whether there should be restrictions, especially in the residential zone, about how many of these are allowed on a parcel, we've talked about screening them from view, and I think if we're going to allow these in residential zones, I think that that is an important point, I think there needs to be some more work to make sure it's clear what we're talking about when we're screening these from neighboring properties or buildings, I do have some concerns about resemble the characteristics of surrounding structure, I think that's going to be very, very difficult for code enforcement to try to enforce that, and I think, if this goes back to the Planning Board, there should be further discussion about differentiating between screening and making it look like a structure, but in my mind, by the time you make this look like the surrounding structures, you might as well have just built a shed of that size to begin with, a lot of this has to do with consistency through the ordinance, but I think, having heard the comments of the council, I know that the Planning Board took action on this proposal to send this forward with a favorable recommendation, but unless we hear something else from the council, I think this needs to go back to the Planning Board, take these comments into consideration, and perhaps have some more discussion to flesh out this proposal in more detail. Any final comments on this item by the council? Great, thanks very much, we appreciate the presentation, Mr. Manager, do you want to make a few comments here as we approach seven o'clock about the senior property tax relief mailing?
Thank you, Mayor, so, Council, you have in front of you two drafts, one was, if we were to do, this is as it pertains to communicating existing programs regarding senior programs for tax assistance, and so the postcard that you see really is just a, you know, something that's pretty easy for our residents to be able to see, take a look at what's currently provided, one, we highlighted the homestead exemption, and then the two programs that are being provided by the state with some, a quick phone number and a reference of an email address to be able to get more information, we can actually pull probably a little bit more out of homestead and maybe add a little bit more to the property tax fairness credit program, so we're highlighting that a little bit more, and we can get some more information, but this would go to every resident in Auburn, just so that, you know, a cost for a postcard to be put in every resident, this is also rent payers, because there are senior tax programs that are available for rent payers as well, so this will cost about $3,300 to do, and make sure that we're hitting that, I think it should go to everyone only because I might receive it, my neighbor might be a senior, I might be able to have a conversation with them, or I have a parent or whatever else, and so I think it should go to everyone, a letter that you see before you, this goes into all the exemption programs that we currently have, including veterans, and then also still highlights the two state programs that were highlighted in the postcard as well as homestead, a little bit more information on this, sometimes when you send a letter out, especially, people are very much overloaded with communication right now in the mail because of the election process, our thought is we would wait on this a little bit, maybe send this out by the first of December, that way their people have this, because one of these does tie to when they file their taxes, and so we want to make sure that they have this information, so they have that available, this would cost just over six thousand, roughly $6,000 to mail this out to all the residents, so you have a couple of options here, what would you, what's the interest of the council, would you like to just see the postcard? Yeah, something simple.
I like the postcard, I think if you could, as you said, retweet the text a little, maybe get one or two more options on the postcard, I think it's an easier, more eye-catching, I think you'll get more conversion on this, on a letter, personally.
Council Whiting?
Yeah, I was going to say the same thing, and, you know, looking at this postcard, there's quite a bit of blank space, so we could expand a little bit.
You have to leave that, yeah.
No, it's okay.
I, too, like the postcard, I think you could even just bullet some of the programs themselves and really highlight the phone number, you also mentioned rental relief, if it works in the wording on the front, not all residents take full advantage of existing property taxing or rental relief programs, just to make sure that we're catching those folks.
Yeah, we have it on the backside, homeowners and renters, but we can try to make sure we have that included.
I think they're just going to throw it out if they're renters and they see it.
Council Whiting?
Yes, also, I don't know what any veterans we have, but I think if we're going to send this out and we got a little bit of space, I don't think it's going to hurt to at least, but I know we've got to be cognizant of how much stuff we put on this, but I think for our veterans, never forget the veterans, have the veterans exemption, just in case they're, they have not remembered and to qualify for that, I think we should put at least that on there.
It's a great idea, I like it.
The only other comment I would make, perhaps, Mr. Manager, we could combine the thoughts of both of these and create a single city webpage that has the details like the letter with the URL on this, so they can go to that if they want to get more detailed information, you know, a more detailed description and maybe web links and phone numbers a place to follow up with.
Great, great feedback.
Council Gary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, would you disregard those that lived in subsidized housing, like Barker Townhouse, Espinard, Great Falls Plaza, Spring Street, and for the simple reason not all of them are paying or having to file taxes for property to get some of these rebates?
Our mailing wouldn't allow us to be able to strip it out that detailed, so it would still go out to everyone.
I figured it would be a great tax savings, I mean, you could potentially cross-reference the voting list addresses with those that we have for city mailings.
Yeah, I think it's, I'm not fully involved in this, but I know it's a, it's a, it's a address mailing that we get through the post office that we utilize, much like some of the mailings that are going out currently for elections, so I know that we can't strip certain things out, and I don't think, I think just the labor... involved in just manually trying to do that, because we will send this and they will send that out.
Oh, in other words, this potentially is just one per household random sort, not exactly tailored to one, like Belinda Gary at
That's correct.
200 or 143 Mail Street.
Right, one to every mailing address.
One to every mailing address.
So if it's a multifamily and there's four units in it, it'll go to that address, unit 1234.
Right, I believe it's like 11,000 or something along those lines that'll be mailed to.
Any other final comments on this?
Just thanks for moving on it.
If not, we'll adjourn the work session and reconvene at seven o'clock. Can't see the box.
I'd like to say I can see that.
The November 4th, 2024 Auburn City Council meeting will be called to order. Please join us in a pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If we could have the city councilors introduce themselves, starting with Council Gary.
Good evening, I'm Belinda Gary. I'm a city councillor at large.
Good evening, Rick Wyden, City Councillor, Ward 1.
Hey there, Tim Cowan, City Councillor, Ward 2.
Good evening, Jeff Hyman, Mayor.
Good evening, Ben Weisner, City Councillor, Ward 4.
Good evening, Leroy Walker, Councillor, Ward 5.
Good evening, Adam Platt, City Councillor at Large.
Good evening, Ubaga Dla, Student Council.
Phil Kroll, City Manager.
We'll note that Councillor Milt had a conflict and will not be joining us tonight. There are no consent items this evening. So the first actionable item is the adoption of the minutes of the October 21st, 2024 regular city council meeting. Are there any errors or corrections? Not seeing any, is there a motion?
Motion to move.
Move by Council Walker to accept the minutes.
Seconded.
Seconded by Councillor Cowan. Vote will be by show of hands. All those in favor? Opposed? Six having voted in the affirmative and none in the negative, the motion's adopted. There are no communications, presentations, or recognitions this evening. To move on to the first open session, any member of the public that would like to address the council about any item that's not on tonight's agenda, please approach the podium and provide your name and address.
Good evening, my name's Bruce Netto. I live at 14 Truman Avenue in Auburn. I've just been appointed to the Audit Committee, and I just wanted to reach out to all of you that if there's something that you'd like to have discussed at our next meeting, which I believe is November 18th, don't quote me on that, but I believe it's November 18th, I'll be more than happy to discuss it with the auditors and discuss it with you if you need any type of clarification or if I can be of assistance in any way. Just wanted to pass that along.
Thank you very much. Is there any other member of the public that would like to address the council? Not seeing any, the open session will be closed. There is no unfinished business this evening. We'll move on to new business. The first item is ordinance 2011042024, amending Chapter 12, Article 4 Housing Code Regarding Property Maintenance and Vacant Buildings. This will be a first reading. And Mr. Cousins?
So I'm here with Chris Bowden, our lead code compliance officer. We had workshopped this with you, I think, a little over a month ago now. The council had asked for a legal review of the ordinance. We've done that, and the city attorney did have some changes that he wanted incorporated into the ordinance. We've made those changes mostly around inspection procedures and when we can access private properties. So we're here to have the first reading, and Chris can also answer any questions about the draft if you still have some.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded, that move by Councillor Cowan, seconded by Councillor Platt. Is there any member of the public that would like to make comment on this item? Please approach the podium, provide your name and address. Not seeing any, public comment will be closed. Questions and comments by the council. Councillor Platt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had one question, I think it's on the final piece of the ordinance, 12-235 vacant buildings. It's Section C about sprinkler systems, and just, I was just hoping for kind of an additional conversation on that. So sprinkler systems need to be maintained unless someone has a request approved. I guess my question is, is it difficult to get that request approved? I know that the maintenance of that system to keep it operational is moderately expensive if you have a vacant building. So just curious what the purpose of that is, and is it easy to get a removal request approved? Might this hold me as a business owner maintaining a sprinkler system in a vacant building?
So whenever they take it out, they'd actually have to request it in writing from the state fire marshal's office, so they'd have to get that approval at the state level first before they come to us.
And it's not easy, but if it was being converted to a use that didn't require a sprinkler system, it may be possible.
And just as a quick follow-up, what is the danger to the city of allowing someone to have a vacant building with a decrepit sprinkler system? Is it simply the threat of frozen pipes?
In the threat of fire. I think, you know, a large warehouse building or something like that would be a good example, that if there were a fire in a protected building, then a working detection system and working sprinkler system could keep that small or put it out while the fire department responds, whereas without that, you know, it might engulf a whole floor or start spreading between floors before there could be any kind of response.
Other questions or comments from the council? Is the council ready for the question? The vote will be by roll call. The clerk will call the roll.
Councillor Walker?
No.
Councillor Platt?
Yes.
Councillor Gary?
No.
Councillor Wyden?
Yes.
Councillor Cowan?
Yes.
Councillor Weisner?
Yes.
Four having voted in the affirmative and two in the negative, the motion is adopted at the first reading. For the public, the second reading and a public hearing will be held on the next council meeting, which is November 18th. The next item of business is Order 14811042024, amendment to Order 10608192024 regarding the city's comprehensive plan committee. For the, for the council and the public, this is a follow-up to our prior meeting when there was a discussion about amending the order that established the comprehensive plan committee. Councillor Gary had asked that this item be put on the agenda to increase the size of the committee from 10 members to 12 under the concurrence of Councillor Platt. This has been placed on the agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Councillor Gary. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councillor Walker. Is there any public comment on this item? If so, the members, the public can approach the podium and provide your name and address. Not seeing any, public comment is closed. Discussion by the council. Councillor Gary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had this brought forward because it only made sense. We had said we were only going to do 10, and they've already been chosen, and then it was open that we were going to accept more applications, so more could be put on, well, the motion tonight is so that we can add two, because it didn't make sense to open it up to take applications for no seats to be filled.
Other questions or comments? Councillor Platt?
Thank you, and I'd just quickly add, first of all, I want to thank Councillor Gary for putting this forward, and let me jump on board. It's also, it's important to me that as a council, we respond when other members of the council say, let's take a look at this. It was brought up at the last meeting that we need to take a look at the representation on the comp plan committee. I think that adding two members is a great way to address those concerns that other councillors had, and a great way to move forward as a council, you know, in hand. So I think it's a great solution, and that's why I'm supporting it.
Other questions or comments from the council? Just for the public, the expanded application period is still open. It ends on November 8th. You can contact the clerk's office or go online and file an application if you're interested in being considered for the comp plan review committee. Is the council ready for questions? Vote will be by show of hands. All those in favor? Opposed? Six having voted in the affirmative and none in the negative, the motion is adopted. The next item is resolved, 711042024, supporting an interim trail for the recommendation for the Casco Bay Trail. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Councillor Weisner. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councillor Platt. For the clarification for the public, this item is a resolve that would make a recommendation that the existing Berlin subdivision railroad corridor that runs from Danville Junction down to the CSX line on the coast, the recommendation would be to the legislature to consider this to be interim trail use, which would mean that the railroad right-of-way would be maintained until there was a need for rail use on that corridor, at which time the legislature could revert it to rail, and in the interim period, it would open up the start of a planning process to identify the funding necessary to convert this. This would be part of the Casco Bay Trail, which would be a 72-mile loop running from down in Yarmouth up through to Auburn, across to Lewiston, down through Lisbon to Brunswick, and back down Route 1 area to Yarmouth. We'll open public comment on this. If there's any member of the public that would like to address the council on this item, please approach the podium and provide your name and address.
My name is Bruce Sleeper, and I live at 1008 Frost Hill Road in Portland. I am the president of Train Riders Northeast, which was the volunteer organization that got the Down Easter here and has done many other things to support passenger rail in the state of Maine. We're in opposition, and our members are in opposition, to acceptance of this resolution. Interim is not a very good word for this, because once the rail, this would involve removing the rail from the line and replacing it with a trail. And once that's removed, a railroad would then have the legal ability to put the rail back, but economically, once rail is removed, it costs way too much to put the rail back in. It costs an order of magnitude or more to put rail back in after it's removed as compared to upgrading a decrepit rail line, which this one is. And so basically what you would be doing is recommending that this line be, no longer ever be used for rail purposes, something to which we're opposed. We have not, we do not oppose trails overall. We think that the correct option is rails with trails. There is a state process that has been started on this. A rail use advisory council has been formed, was formed, took a vote on this, and the vote was not exactly a resounding, let's rip up the rail. In fact, the vote was seven to six with two abstentions. There were five parties that voted for rail with trail, where the rail is left in there and the trail is built alongside the rail. There was one party, which was the representative of St. Lawrence in Atlantic, which voted for just rail use. So we're at a, we're in a situation where this is just not very clear-cut. The resolution indicates that rail with trail is no longer an available policy option. Well, that's simply not the case. Right now, it is an available policy option. Now, why is it that? Well, for one thing, if you rip up this rail line and it never comes back... Well, for one thing, if you rip up this rail line and it never comes back, you're going to be in a situation where even though there is a parallel CSX line, CSX will never let anyone onto that line for passenger rail except for Amtrak, which they're required to do under federal law. So if you wanted any sort of service up to the Lewiston Auburn area for any purpose other than intercity rail by Amtrak, you'd be prohibited from doing it. CSX is renowned for not wanting any service other than Amtrak on their lines. So again, you'd be foreclosing any potential of a commuter line with rapid service down to Portland or up somewhere they said. And this line would no longer be used for that. The other thing that's out there is that this is actually a bit premature. The process at the state level, first of all, starts with this rail use advisory council, RWAQ. And that RWAQ makes a recommendation to the commissioner of transportation by a, not even a majority vote of the, of all of the members, but by plurality vote, that recommendation is to rip up the rail. The commissioner hasn't issued a decision as to whether he wants to agree with that recommendation. And even once he does, it then goes to the legislature, where the legislature makes a determination as to whether they're going to accept whatever the commissioner has recommended. So we're early on in this. The second part of this is that the state, before it can rip up its own rail line, because it is owned by the state now, has to not only go through this RWAQ process, but also the Department of Transportation has to issue a report providing that, or concluding that the removal of the rail will not have a negative impact on a region or on future economic opportunities for that region. Such a report has never even been started, much less completed. So I think, first of all, ultimately, I think this council should vote against this, but even if there was some thought about voting for it, it should be put off until things have gone on further.
I'm Peter Cole, two Warbler Drive in Topsom, and I'm representing the Maine Rail Group, which is another organization that works with the Train Riders Northeast. And we're advocates for public transit, walking and biking, and we're advocates for rails with trails. As the mayor of a city nationally known as the bicycle city said, rails and bikes go together. We have lots of challenges. We need to work together to provide accessible transportation for all, reverse extreme weather and sea level rise, and stimulate affordable housing. To provide solutions, we need to complete a set of transportation options. An interim trail is not a solution. Why spend a million dollars a mile creating a trail only to realize that we need to spend more money to tear out that trail and rebuild what already exists there now? Rails need to be preserved to enable the construction of a backbone of rail service in existing corridors. The successful, efficient rail transportation will be needed sooner than we think. Rails with trails in Maine will serve as an investment for the future. We need to work together and we need to look at rails with trails, not tearing out the rails. There is no such thing, as Bruce said, about an interim trail, because once they're torn out, it becomes economically impossible to replace. Thank you.
My name's Joe Polichia, ten Jocelyn Street in Auburn. I'm a member of the Maine Cycling Club and I'm also a member of Train Riders Northeast, and I've been one for twenty years. I'd just like to say that I have never heard from that organization, my organization, a coherent discussion of what economic benefit would lead to restoring rail service on the Berlin subdivision line. You have to remember that for freight purposes, it basically parallels the existing functional CSX line. The only potential use would be for passenger rail. And I would say that in the next two years, the MDOT-funded program, the LAP program, is going to determine whether there's any need for commuter-like bus service, intercity bus service between Portland and Lewiston. And that would make a much more reasonable alternative to trying to establish commuter rail on a line that's basically non-functional. Thank you.
Hello, Jeremiah Bartlett, one oh seven Shepley Street here in Auburn. I'm also the chair of the Complete Streets Committee, and I just want to weigh in on this topic. I do feel as if I come from a position of having a fairly unique perspective on this effort, because I'm also very familiar with a process that's taken place to date on the other end of the corridor, as my work in Portland has had me interact directly with the City Sustainability and Transportation Committee on this topic. It's become very complicated. I've been to the S and T Committee in Portland three times over this matter, and they haven't arrived at a conclusion. And a lot of the questions that have come up are some of the same ones that have been raised this evening. I want to further add that I was a member of the RWAQ process, as has been previously discussed, and I have to say that I found the RWAQ process quite wanting. It essentially provided very few opportunities for alternatives analysis. It generally stated you can either do a trail, or you can do rail with trail, or you can maintain rail. Unfortunately, it assumed that the only use for that facility was intercity railroad, similar to an Amtrak service. There's a variety of possible outcomes that could be used for that line. None of those were discussed during that process, despite the fact that those questions were raised during the process. Much of this seemed to be generated by specific interest groups, and it became very clear to me that the process as it really should play out with a full, formal, multimodal alternatives analysis did not take place. Furthermore, I come here in some level of frustration as the chair of the Complete Streets Committee to find that this topic, which is a policy matter of multimodal transportation, has bypassed the Complete Streets Committee. As noted in the ordinance, that is our role. That has not come to us. All of a sudden, this is on the agenda. This is something that I asked staff last month if there was, this topic was coming up, because I was dealing with it in Portland, and here it is tonight. I got no information on this. I've reached out to staff about this, I've gotten no response, and to be honest with you, it's a bit disappointing that we didn't have the opportunity to discuss this further. So I think that's all I'm going to say for tonight, other than I really do feel that Portland and Auburn should talk together. I think that Auburn should consider all of its best possible options. And lastly, I want to close with the fact that my current understanding in conversations between Portland and the commissioner of the Department of Transportation is that the commissioner is currently focused on constructing a facility between Portland and Yarmouth. Not Auburn, Yarmouth. Because the political powers that be are pushing to move this facility solely to the coastal communities and provide connections to Freeport and Brunswick. So I understand there's a lot of interest in this tonight, but I'm not even sure that Auburn is on the playing board right now. Lastly, I'll close out with, I see on this topic of budgetary impacts, something we've talked about a lot at Public Works in Portland is, what would the budgetary impacts of a pathway be? I don't believe anyone's discussed whether or not this facility will be lit. I don't believe anybody's discussed whether this facility would be plowed in the winter. We don't know exactly what this facility would be. And these are some of the topics that came up at the Cumberland Committee, Town Council, that also tripped them up as well. So this is not a fait accompli, folks. This is a serious situation where Auburn has a lot of possibilities to have future opportunities and potential, and ultimately, I approach these things as I generally do with everything, which is maximize your opportunities. It would seem to me, based on everything I've experienced so far, that the best way to maximize our opportunities would be to place as many options on this corridor as possible. I will totally agree with what's been said earlier in public comment tonight, that working with CSX is essentially a euphemism, and trying to achieve a future outcome with that is probably not going to work. I've also been grievously disappointed with the state's work so far on the LAP. I understand this is to be seen as sort of the end-all, be-all. I hope it is not. It has a poor schedule, it has poor branding, and if it's being used as the future for transportation between here and Portland, we are in for a great disappointment. So, thank you.
Are there any other members of the public that'd like to address the council? If not, public comment will be closed. Discussion by the council. Councillor Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is there a rush that we have to do it tonight? Can we table this to get more information?
You could certainly table this to get more information. I'm not sure how much more information will be forthcoming, but the council could certainly do that.
Because I want to do what's right for our community. There's, I mean, I know we've had discussions and I've understood that, but originally, the council had said that we wanted rails and trails. And now we're being sort of told that the rails is not an option. And I understand the fact that it's going to take a lot of work probably if we did leave the trail, I mean, the rails in, but then we just heard arguments that it's going to cost less. I'm not, I'm not sure if I've got really enough information to say I'm going to support this resolution or what we're voting on tonight.
Other comments or questions by the council? Councillor Platts?
Thank you. I guess my questions, and I don't know that we necessarily have the answers, but, you know, we're talking about a lot of hypotheticals. I appreciate the comment of leaving yourself as many options as possible for the future. I think that is the right way to just run everything. But how realistic is it that CSX or somebody's going to invest, I don't know, a hundred to four hundred million dollars in that line? I understand it's possible. Is it possible in my lifetime, though? You know, if it is, great, maybe we should be having that discussion. If it's not, sure, a million dollars a mile, that's a lot of money, twenty-six point five million dollars to create a twenty-six mile trail. But I just, in this current economic climate, who is going to invest a half a billion dollars in that line to do the things that are possible? I understand they're possible, but I'm just trying to be pragmatic about where money comes from, and I know it doesn't grow on trees.
Other questions, comments by the council? Councillor Cowan?
Thank you. Thank you. I don't think it's going to cost us any money to have a discussion. I value the comments that have been made. I think they're very impactful for me on my decision. I would like to see us wait, have more discussion, reach out to the city of Portland if we can. I don't think it's going to hurt to get more information on this subject, to wait, I don't think, in that matter, and get more, as councillor Gary said, to get the more information and come back to us so we have more available. Thank you.
Councillor Cowan?
Yeah, I was, I had a question just about the rail with trail no longer being a policy option. Do we have any more information about that at this, at this point? Because we've heard two different arguments. I just didn't know whether there was any.
My understanding of this is that this is within the purview of the legislature to make a decision about whether or not they would authorize interim trail. And that will be the bill that's going to be in front of the legislature. The legislature can do whatever they want, but I think that that's the question that will be in front of the legislature. Do you have follow-up? Other questions or comments? Councillor Whiting?
I'm a member of Downey Train Riders Down East. I joined when Wayne Davis came and spoke to Go On Us twenty-something years ago. I'm in favor of rail transportation. I'm not sure how realistic this particular rail line is for reactivation. On the other hand, I've reread this, you know, memo, and it kind of disturbs me that you would be talking about a paved trail if you were going to do an interim trail. I was on the Sunrise Trail in Machias, East Machias and Machias. I don't consider that paved. I think what they did is they took out the rails and just left sort of a gravel base there, and it's kind of rough, but it's passable and usable by cyclists and runners and four-wheelers and whatnot. So, I mean, I just think there are a lot of questions about this. I initially was in, sort of, tending to think that because the bridge is out on the south end and the north end is completely overgrown, I've run on it and sprained an ankle and got poison ivy. It's just so bad, the intersection in New Auburn. I'm not sure it's terribly realistic, but I don't think there's any harm in delaying a decision on this.
Other questions or comments from the council? Councillor Walker?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we park this until later date.
Well, before there's a second on that, are you intending to stop debate?
Well, I, I don't think I heard that question quite right. What, say it again, please.
So you've made the motion, but not everyone on the council's had a chance to speak. Are you intending to make the motion to table to stop debate?
No, I thought everyone had said their piece.
Are there any, before I add some things to this, is there any other questions or comments from the council? Councillor Whiting?
I guess, you know, the question on the tabling would be, would we want to put a date on it? And I'm not sure what that date should be, but at least that raises the question of just, you know, tabling to a date certain versus just indefinitely tabling forever.
Yeah, so I'd add a number of things to this. So first, if the council is determining that they would like to table this, I think you would have a date certain, and I think this council then needs to decide what the interim action's going to be. Because if you do nothing but table this, when this comes back in front of this council, you'll be in the exact same position you are today. All of the participants in this process have had months to come forward to Auburn with whatever their recommendations were. They were meeting starting last April here, that some of the people in this audience were at. Nobody came forward. There was conversations about the Complete Streets Committee. The Complete Streets Committee hasn't taken an action and made a recommendation from an action to either the Auburn or Lewiston Planning Board or either city council in at least three years, from looking at their minutes. In 2022, when it came before the Complete Streets Committee, they made no recommendation on this. The recommendation that came from the council was from the, from our transportation director, and the only notes in the minute from the Complete Streets Committee said that whatever was done would be for any type of activity other than rail, like trail would be interim. So if you're going to table this, you're going to have to provide some direction on how you want more information to come forward. On the issue itself, look, this is a rail line that a railroad would not maintain, and the state bought in two purchases, one in 2007 and one in 2010. There are currently no plans for rail activity on that line. In fact, there's been studies commissioned by DOT, all of which said it wasn't feasible to run passenger service from Portland to Auburn. Now, does that mean forever? I don't know, but it certainly is not going to be any time in the near term. If you examine DOT's seven-year plan, there's all kinds of expenditures put in there for rail activity. There's not one penny related to this line. This is a parallel line in which, that's parallel to CSX. And I understand the position that CSX is difficult to work with, but CSX runs six trains a day up that line, and that's all that comes through there. Right? The, whether we ever have passenger rail is something that would be in the far distant future. In fact, after DOT said there was no case for passenger rail, they commissioned a study to see if inner-city bus transport, if there was a case for that. And the answer for that was, no, there wasn't. So to prove that point, DOT has appropriated the money for the temporary lap bus, which I would certainly agree with the speakers, leaves a lot to be desired, and we've made our concerns about how that's being run to DOT. But the issue here- how that's being run to DOT. But the issue here is that someday, maybe in the far distant future, there could be a need for rail. If so, the legislature can turn this back into a rail line. The thought here is not to support trail only and convert this into a permanent trail. And while the ties and rail lines would be removed, that's an expensive proposition, the current estimates of $55 million to create the 72-mile Casco Bay Trail Loop. Now, if the commissioner and ultimately the legislature decide to adopt interim trail, the first step in that is a study. So lots of the questions about what would the trail look like, exactly how it would be, we don't know, because there's not going to be a study of this unless they approve the interim trail designation. And then they would have to appropriate the funds to create the trail. DOT's estimates are $200 to $400 million to renovate this line, right? $200 million for slow-speed freight, up to $400 million for passenger line. And I agree with Counselor Platt. I'm not sure where that money's coming from. Clearly, no railroad is stepping forward to provide that. And the question is, are we going to, is a state going to, in conjunction with the federal government perhaps, provide hundreds of millions of dollars for this one rail line? So while there may be a case sometime in the future, it seems to me that there's recreational and economic development opportunities in South Auburn for the city of Auburn if this is run as an interim trail. Until such time, perhaps someone comes forward with a case to actually run freight or passenger rail on this line, in which case the legislature could restore the primary use of this to rail. So if, if the, again, the council is only making a recommendation here, as long as a number of other communities, ultimately, this will be taken up the legislative session and the legislature will make a decision. So I'll turn the floor back to Counsel Walker if he wants to make a tabling motion. But then I think this council, if you table this, needs to think about what you're going to do in the interim regarding this issue. Counsel Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My mind is thinking of the unintended consequences. When you mentioned the word "study," whether, I don't know for a fact if it's the legislature or the city study. When we were looking at rail to Lewiston-Auburn area, we had to pony up money with Lewiston to commission the study that went nowhere. When you talk about, what's this trail going to look like? Is it going to be a nature trail where we don't pave it? Or are we going to pave it? Are we going to put crushed stone and stuff and make it so that people of all physical abilities is going to be able to use it? Without answering these questions, I can't vote for this the way it is tonight, and I would support a tabling measure as a means to try to get more of these answered.
So to be clear, the question about this trail isn't, this is not an Auburn initiative. The study, this has gone on in other places in the state. They just authorized the other portion of the Berlin subdivision in the last legislature. The legislature would have to provide the funds for the study to determine what the trail would look like, the type of trail that would be used. This isn't something that the city would be funding.
Are you positive that they're not going to come back to us and say, Auburn, this is your share to do your, whatever part is in your municipality?
Well, that's not the way this has happened before. Could the legislature come back and say that? Sure. But then it would have to come back before the council as a CIP item in the budget. So it's not expected that the city of Auburn would be the party developing the trail. And this in no way would bind the city of Auburn to any type of appropriation. If someone suggested that, it would have to come back before the council. Counsel Whiting.
Thank you. Just so we're all clear, because I know we're kind of trying to figure out what we're going to do, this, that we've already had a motion and a second that's already on the table, is this a resolve to say, this is what we'd like to see? And so that the legislature knows that the city council would like to see this, this proposed resolution, this is what we'd like to see. Obviously, like we've heard multiple times, that's up to the legislature. But we would like to see it, the council, however they vote, would like to see it this way. Is that correct?
That's correct. It would be, it would be a recommendation for interim trail is the designation that the legislature would give to this.
Okay. So, so with that, with what's on the table, and I don't know if there's been a motion, because I know there's been a lot of discussion, so this is my kind of comment and thought. We've heard from the constituents about that their Complete Streets has some information that they were tasked with working on this. Maybe a thought that we could do is maybe the second council meeting in January, I'm just trying to put some thoughts out there, that we could have a report from Complete Streets possibly to come back to us by the second meeting in January. We could table this, too, and then have maybe the rail, rail trail give us a report as well, if the council is accepted by that by the second week, in second meeting in January, to table this, too. And then we can discuss it further by then, giving them some time to give us some more information, if the council wishes. And I, I just wanted to put that out there. That's kind of my just thoughts. Thank you.
Other questions or comments by the council? Counsel Walker.
Thank you. I still think, if you don't mind, I'd like to table this, maybe until after January or first of February. But I think what was just said, having the different groups look at it, bring back their thoughts to us, maybe better information we have right now, that would work better than us voting on it the way it is tonight.
So relative to the date, my advice would be you want a lot shorter timeframe than that, because, no pun intended, the train's going to have left the station and the legislature's going to be working on this, and they're probably not going to care what Auburn has to say by February.
Well, if you think we can move it closer, if they can get it done, I don't know. We're asking a lot to be done, I believe.
If you don't mind, can we have the representative from Complete Streets come back and give our thoughts, his thoughts?
So Complete Streets can take this up like any other, there's certainly other advocacy groups that have a completely different view of this than the two folks that spoke for the rail. I would not, I would not task this to Complete Streets and say that they're going to provide you the definitive answer. I think if you're going to table this, table it to a date certain, and we can invite the parties that want to provide input to provide input at a work session in the meeting prior to the tabling date. And that can include Complete Streets and other advocacy groups that want to weigh in. So Counsel Walker? I think he's checking his calendar for a date.
I was, too.
Yeah, I would say December 16th.
And Madam Clark, that's a scheduled meeting. So the motion on the table is to table until, actually, the motion is to postpone till December 16th. And is there a second?
Point of information, when is the legislative closure date? Because that may guarantee, I mean, determine when we have to get this to them.
Yeah, so the closure date's going to be in December. I don't think that's determinative because regardless of what the city of Auburn says or the recommendation from any of the other towns, there's going to be a bill introduced to deal with this, right? The issue is really to make our, not to meet closure date, the issue is really that if Auburn wants to make a recommendation, we need to recommend this before you're in committee and committee works going. So I think that that date that Counsel Walker has recommended would work for that purpose.
Then I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Vote will be by show of hands. All those in favor? Opposed? Six having voted in the affirmative and none in the negative. The motion is adopted. The next order of business is Order 1491102024, amending Order 12309162024, extending the reporting deadline for the Mayor's Ad Hoc Committee on Bonafide Agricultural, Recreational, Natural Resources Land Use Committee from November 18th to November 16th. For clarification, we previously asked the committee to report by November 18th, which gave them about a six-week period to work on this. They've met twice and have a third meeting scheduled and have reported back through planning that while they're working diligently on this, they won't be able to meet the November 18th deadline and asking for a month extension. Is there a motion?
Don't move.
Moved by Counsel Gary, seconded by Counsel Walker. Are there any member of the public that would like to comment on this item? Please approach the podium and provide your name and address.
Good evening. My name is John Cleveland. I live 183 Davis Avenue in Auburn. I'm a member of the committee, the Ad Hoc Committee. We are making very good progress going forward, and we're looking for just a little bit more time so we can have a more complete and thorough report to you. And I'm confident we'll make the extended date. Hope you will approve it.
Any other member of the public that would like to address the council? Not seeing any public comment will be closed. Discussion by the council? Counsel ready for the question? Vote will be by show of hands. All those in favor? Opposed? Six having voted in the affirmative and none in the negative. The motion's adopted. We'll move on to reports. I have a number of items to report on. I presented at the LA Senior College since the last meeting regarding municipal government and current topics in Auburn. An update on the fee schedule committee. So the committee has met twice. Once was an organizational meeting, and then they started in on the detailed work. They're reviewing fees by department, and they started with the clerk department, and they're continuing to work through that. In general, the conversation is focusing around whether or not the listed fees and the schedule are still necessary, what their purpose are, that generally being whether it's to recapture cost or if it's for revenue generation, and if it's for cost recapture, if the fee reasonably relates to the cost that's being incurred by staff to perform the work. I attended the Reimagine Washington Street presentation. Counsel Weisner attended as well. I think that both transportation and planning staff, along with their contractor Nostar, did a really excellent job, pretty well attended, lots of discussion. There's going to be a follow-up, second meeting for the same presentation. It'll be online on November 7th at 6:00 PM. And if you go to the city website under the calendar, you can get the information about the Zoom connection for that. I attended the Strengthening Communities and Supporting Families presentation. That was put on by our Public Health Department, Safe Voices and Community Concepts. Really excellent presentation regarding domestic violence and child abuse in the general Andersgoggin County area and specifically here in Auburn. I attended the Manufacturers Association meeting that was held, their annual meeting was held up at the community college. As usual, the community college did a great job hosting. I had a really good turnout from the Manufacturers Association, and I was pleased to present the Manufacturers Association Community Excellence Award to Panalame for all of the work that they have done with workforce development and participating in the community. The last item that I wanted to bring to people's attention was regarding voting. So the, at the close of our absentee, we had 5,872 absentee ballots requested. 5,445 have been returned or the individuals voted early. The clerk and the poll staff did an excellent job. The ongoing flow was more than we could typically handle down at the clerk's office, so they set it up here in the council chamber. Every day, they had a couple of poll workers working. It worked out really well to handle the flow. If you're one of the 400-plus people that requested an absentee ballot but hadn't returned it, you can return that to the clerk by 8:00 PM on November 5th, or you can come to the poll and vote. So there's over 7,500 registered voters that haven't voted, so I would encourage everyone to come out tomorrow and vote. The polls are open 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Ward 1 and 2 votes at the senior center, 3 and 4 at City Hall, and Ward 5 down at the Boys and Girls Club. And we're expecting a large turnout. And again, it's an important election. If you want your voice heard, come out and vote. And with that, Counsel Gary.
I've got no report, but I've got a couple of questions about what you just said. In other words, if people have taken out or had mailed ballots to them, they need to bring them in and drop them in the drop box out front downstairs?
Madam Clark?
Yes, people can drop off their absentee ballot in the drop box up until 8:00 tomorrow evening. They can return it if you've put it in the mail. I have coordinated with the mail, and they're going to be doing a final drop-off here 10 minutes before 8:00. So, or you can hand-deliver it here to City Hall. But please don't bring it to the polls. It has to be coming back to the clerk's office.
Then the second thing is, if you're, if you're an Auburn resident but are not registered to vote, I've been told that you can go, if you know which ward that your voting place is, you can go to that ward and not have to come running here to Auburn Hall to register the vote, to run all the way back to your poll.
Yes, that's correct.
And if they, when they check in at the poll, if they're at the wrong place, they'll direct them to the appropriate location to go to register and vote.
Yes, yes, that's correct.
Counsel Whiting.
Just want to highlight an email I got from Liz Allen. She sent it to the council and mayor about a special meeting on Thursday, November 14th at 5:00 on the revaluation. So for people who have questions about assessing and how their house will be evaluated for, you know, purposes of assessment, this is the place, in this, in these council chambers, Thursday, November 14th at 5:00.
I just wanted to say an extra accolade and thanks to Jay Brenchik, Director of Economic Development. I think the work and the events that took place over the last several weeks with highlighting manufacturing, you know, starting here in Auburn is just fantastic. It just highlights the already great companies that are here and the potential that we have to expand the businesses and our position as a hub in the state of Maine. So I appreciate him with all the effort, and thanks to everyone who was able to come out and appreciate that, including many here.
Counsel Whiting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yep, concur with everybody. Remember to vote tomorrow. Remember to do your civic duty. Other than that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Counsel Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to put a big shout-out to all the people that came for the Halloween Day in New Auburn, and a thank you to all the businesses that were part of that. We had over 500 people show up for Halloween, which was only from 1:00 to 3:00, and that's a big crowd. a big crowd in a couple hours. So I wanted to thank everybody for that. And second, Age Friendly has put it on a Thanksgiving dinner again this year at the Auburn Senior Center, Pettingill Park. The doors will open at 11:00 o'clock. We will try to serve very close to 12:00 o'clock. That is a free dinner for anyone in need or just wants to come and spend the time with us and, you know, have some fun talking to some new people that you may meet. But we ask for donations, only if you can afford to give us a donation to help us to do it again, again, and again, and again, year after year. But don't be afraid to show up. It's more personal if you do, and don't worry about money. So happy Thanksgiving. We'll be provided if you'd like to come on Thanksgiving Day.
Council Platt?
Thank you. One exciting update from the school department, and if you've opened up next meeting's agenda, you've already seen this for the school committee meeting, but the school department has named the new principal at Edward Little High School, Valerie Ackley, who was actually my math teacher. So that's exciting news for her. I believe she was a vice principal previous to this. So that's on the agenda for Wednesday's meeting. So that's exciting news. And I guess, yes, just to echo everyone's sentiments on voting, I would say to everyone watching, please vote tomorrow, but more importantly, be nice.
Representative Al Dye?
I have no new report as of tonight.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mayor and council. I don't think we can mention Election Day enough, so I will say that I appreciate our city clerk, Emily, and her team have done an outstanding job. She has worked with, I think, all departments as well, as she's been prepping and preparing for her Super Bowl tomorrow. And just want to assure the citizens, there's a, a lot of work has gone into this. You will have a safe location to vote. The team has done a great job with that, and really encourage people to go out. L A T C is also offering free transportation on the bus line tomorrow, so if individuals need to access their poll, please go ahead and either on the website or call L A T C, and they will assist you through Western Maine Transportation, assist you in getting to the polls. I want to thank the mayor and the councilors who attended the October 25th remembrance at the city of Lewiston last week. You know, great turnout from the community and showing support for the family members and those who are still, still and will be for some time, working through and journeying with that major loss in their lives. So appreciate everyone that came out for that. And to echo Counselor Wyden's comments regarding November 14th at 5:00 p.m., not only will be the assessing staff, but it'll also be our vendor, K R T, and their staff will be onsite at the chamber and talking about revale. We also have a revale Auburn page on the website. Encourage people to go there and get more information. And lastly, Sunday, December 8th at 3:00 p.m. will be the city of Auburn's parade and tree lighting. We are seeking applicants for the parade. We've only had a few so far. To make a parade worthwhile, we need to have great participation. We are reaching out to different organizations currently, but if others know groups that could participate in the parade, we'd appreciate that information, and that's it.
Great, thank you. Just for the council and the public, the 2024 August financial report won't be provided tonight. There was a personal issue that the deputy finance director had to take care of and is not here. We'll move on to the second open session of the evening. If there's members of the public that would like to address the council about any item that wasn't on tonight's agenda, please approach the podium and provide your name and address. Not seeing any, the open session will be closed. The council will be adjourning to Room 204 for the executive session, and for the public, no action is expected after the executive session. The expectation is, as soon as the executive session concludes, the council will adjourn. So we'll break for five minutes, and then we'll reconvene in 204 for the executive session.